Like soak them like in water or did you just, you just?
Yeah, and then he dislocated his jaw.
Okay, it's 7:30. On October 2nd, we will call to order the Brainerd City Council meeting and we'll start with roll call.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stengel.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
Bevins. And Bedeau.
Here.
And we go to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is the approval of the agenda or any additions or changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Chesak.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We'll move on to number six, a presentation from the Armed Forces Tribute Committee. Give me your best five minutes, Tammy. Come on up and introduce yourself.
I want to thank all of you at the Chamber, excuse me, the City Council of Brainerd. It's been my pleasure to be here tonight and I really want to send a gratitude to all the whole community of the, of the City of Brainerd too as well. And first, I'd just like to touch base on a couple things. On September 15th, we held the Armed Forces Tribute Event that was very well received and attended and it was just a beautiful program too as well. And we also honored and remembered our baton heroes and they were very much remembered. And it was also the day of actual September 15th National Recognized POW MIA Recognition Day. And we tied that in with the Armed Forces Tribute with this, this, this event, program. And, and on the, on the program the day, we had a special guest, Larry Osvoed, the nephew of his uncle Julius Knudsen that has been missing in action in POW. And we wanted to remember him too as well. And for next year, we're, we're hoping if everything goes well, we would love to keep this annual, annual tradition to host the Armed Forces POW MIA of Recognition and POW MIA Nationally Recognized Recognition Day is, I believe, is every third Friday of every September. So just keep that in the back of your mind. And it's been a pleasure to be here tonight too as well. And we also have some, there were some crazy things that went on this summer. I know this was my, me and my co-chair Emily Norris that is a veteran too as well with the Navy. She was going to try to be here tonight, but something came up with her little one-year-old daughter, so she couldn't make it. And her husband's serving in the military too as we speak as well. And I do have a special little presentat- I'm going to leave this behind. If you can feel free to just take a look at this and just kind of know that we are going to be doing everything we can to try to represent POW MIA throughout the year. And we just want to, you know, remember our POW. So please keep them in your prayers. And things got a little crazy this summer, you know, because I know there were things that came up before the event and throughout the summer, there was so much going on. And we also had Senator Representative from Senator Amy Klobuchar's office of Andrea Delagato. She came from, all the way from the Twin Cities and she's also a military and she was a part of the program. And so was, we had a David Seminary from the US Army from Fort Snelling. That was really good. And we're just so grateful that we had a great turnout as well and we're hoping to grow next year. And we're hoping to add a little bit more so that way we can have a little bit more so where people can come. And we're going to go for is maybe see about having it at the county fair. We're going to check that out down the road. And we're hoping we can have the POW MIA hot air balloon lifted next year and maybe rides, maybe, possibly. We'll see what happens. So anyways, just want to thank all of you for, this has been my pleasure. This one has really hit home with me this summer and I know there were times I probably got a little way out there. So please forgive me on that and hoping next year, which I know we're going to have a good, great turnout and we're not going to give up on trying to search for our POW MIA. So thank you. And would like to also present a special appreciation to the City, City of Brainerd Street Department that accommodated the parking accommodations that really helped because there were a couple groups or so from senior livings too as well. And we're just, it helped, you know, where they got to park, you know, like one of the senior livings, a couple of their vans and some of the other groups of other agencies too as well. On September 15th, it was an honor to all be a part of this and it's all for the community and whatnot. And Jesse Den, like if you don't mind, would you please come up here? And would like to present this, this certificate of appreciation for the City of, Street of Brainerd Department for all your accommodations to make our, make the event very successful too as well. And we'll be presenting, I'd like to present that to you. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure. And we'll also be presenting these frames and certificates to all the sponsors and supporters too as well that were a part of the Armed Forces Tribute Committee. And please feel free to look me up if you have any questions. And next year, I do believe it's going to be a little, I'm just working out the kinks. Me and my committee are just working out the kinks. So just bear with us and that was different from last year. So as we move on in.
All right, thanks Tammy. If you could give me the list of the MIA's or bring them up to here, we'll post it here at City Hall.
Sure. Would love that.
What's your name?
Tammy Ebertowski.
Thank you, Tammy.
Mr. President, I attended your event Tammy and it was very good. So thank you very much for all that you're doing in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. We all came together and the Veterans of Foreign Wars was there too as well. And you guys already know the rest, so I won't go on and on. But the media was great coverage by the Brainerd Dispatch and Lakeland Public TV too as well and Prefor, Hubbard Radio and other radio stations and other media too. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. Do you want me to leave this here?
Yeah, just bring them up here. All right. Perfect. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, next item on the agenda is council committee report. 7A is the Personnel and Finance Committee. Councilmember Terry.
All right, this is my first go around with this, Mr. President. So the first item on the agenda is to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of traffic safety enforcement grant and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead. Well, we'll let Kara speak to the motion and then I'll get you Jeff.
So, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, this is a public safety grant. And I had asked for a little more information for, from the chief as to where all this money goes. Basically, all of the departments within the county are eligible for some of these dollars. We do receive some administrative dollars to help cover the costs of administrating the grant and it'll go toward traffic safety in our community.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I kind of, maybe my question's for the chief if he's able to. There's risk assessments provided in the grant application. Is that something that we can, can share with the council? Of course, I don't need you to go into detail on that now, but is that a possibility? I mean, it shows that it was included, but it's not something you can have in there. It's a, I think, submitted online. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That application was an online submission through the state D grants.
Does that answer your question?
Well, can, can we, can we see the risk assessment for the Brainerd Police on that? Is that something you could get to me?
Sure, I can check on that and yeah, make that available at a later time.
I guess my, my, I've always wondered about these, this, towards zero death. It sounds like a very good program. I would not, but I always wonder about potential liability. You know, if, and then do we have, when officers of Brainerd are on patrol outside the city limits, are, do you then have additional staff or the same number of staff working while those officers are out patrolling, say maybe Highway 169 or wherever they may go?
Sure, the, the staff that participates in work in those targeted enforcement events are off-duty staff that come in and work that. So it is not the, you know, the scheduled patrol staff. So it does not decrease our staffing numbers from what they normally would have been.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Jeff. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Chesak.
Yes. That carries.
All right. So our second item on the agenda is to approve the promotion of Miranda Halversen to police administrative supervisor and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Have to take it away.
Thank you, sir. So this is filling Julie McCullough's position. She will be retiring and we accepted that retirement with regret. So Miranda, Miranda, yes, will be taking over on October 16th at Step Three. She's going to do great. She's super excited about her new role and looking forward to having her in that position.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
The next item is to approve the 2024 health insurance broker agreement and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yep.
So this is the 2024 service agreement between City of Brainerd and North Risk Partners. For North Risk Partners to be our 2024 health insurance broker through the Better Health Collective, which is formerly known as Sourcewell.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
All right. The next agenda item is to consider Intrify Cash Service Agreement with Brainerd, or Bremer, I'm sorry, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Kara?
So Bremer Bank has a new program called Intrify Cash Services, which allows the city's funds currently held in a money market account to be swept into a different account to be used with ICS. The funds are then placed with banks that participate in the network and increments of less than the FDIC insurance amount. The current interest rate on the traditional money market account is about 3%. The interest rate for ICS is 5.3%, thus increasing our revenue.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
And finally, we had a discussion on the Lakes Area Media Collaborative. That has been an ongoing discussion with our, with our council. We have decided to go ahead and direct staff to complete the document that is included in our packet and in terms of a potential violation to our contractual agreement. And the staff will be completing that document and bringing it back to PNF for us to review at our next meeting. And that ends my presentation.
Any, any discussion?
Chair.
Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Yep.
Did this mention we have a contractual agreement?
We don't have a contractual agreement.
So I'm confused on the motion.
We're filling out the, the motion is to fill out the Attorney General complaint form if you fear that perhaps a charity might be misappropriating funds. It has little to do with the contract with the city. Jeff?
Well, first, there was no motion. So.
ISO move.
We have a motion and a second.
Sorry.
Jeff?
I believe I had the floor. Are we on a motion and a second?
You did. If you'll allow it, we'll take that as the motion and second and have discussion here, Jeff.
That goes to my point I was going to speak to, but go ahead. I'll, I'll pick up after the.
Okay.
Can I, can I continue after we?
Absolutely. Floor will be yours.
Okay. After we vote? Or would you rather I do it now? Okay, I'll do it now.
You wanted to talk to this?
I'll do it now. So at our last meeting, and if you look at the packet, it says staff was directed to bring this up forward on the agenda. And this does not follow our rules of decorum. I'm not against this, but I just wanted to point this out that sometimes we give direction at a council meeting. And however it may seem there's no disagreement, the rules of decorum say if you want something on the agenda, you ask for it in writing. We don't do that at a council. And if you are going to, it should pass by a motion to give staff direction. So it was kind of ironic that we were moving forward this based on Kara's explanation. We were directing staff to do this and there was no motion. I think everybody understands what I'm saying. If not, I can continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I understand what you're going to do.
So, but just, just so I, I don't mean to be repetitive, but it indicated in the minutes that you said you wanted to see this on the agenda, which is fine, but that's where as a council, we should recognize that and make a motion so that staff gets direction through that process. Thank you.
You are technically correct, Jeff, which is the best kind of correct. So I think there was just a little bit of confusion. I do believe the intention was to bring a motion to council to direct staff to fill out this form, right?
No, I'm not talking about the motion today.
You meant to get it on the agenda in the first place?
Talking about the motion on September 18th. There was no motion and there shouldn't. So I'm just kind of like a, we have to be more cognizant of that as a city council.
Technically correct.
My apologies, Mr. President, and I, I was thinking we didn't need a motion tonight because it was coming back to PNF for us to review and then we would bring it as a motion at the next council meeting. So that was my error in judgment, Mr. Chesak.
But there's a motion now.
Only because you asked for one, so.
That's the rules of decorum.
All right, any other discussion? Do we need to direct staff to put it in writing to request to do this next?
We make a motion. You don't have to put it in writing.
All right, perfect. All in favor of the motion to direct staff to fill out this complaint form, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. That brings us, well, anything else? Personnel and Finance? All right, let's go to 7B, Safety and Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President Johnson. We had four items on safety and public works tonight. The first of which was authorizing SRF to apply for the active transportation grant. Motion coming out of the committee was to recommend authorization and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mike?
This is just, we have $15,000 in funds laying around to direct SRF to apply for these types of grants. This one is the active transportation grant, hopefully getting up to a million dollars towards the pedestrian bridge that we want to see over 210 sometime when we get our highway rebuilt if everything falls in place. So hopefully taking a big chunk of that multimillion dollar project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Item number two, this was a request to award the improvement 2312 Southwest Fourth Street Washout Repair Project. Motion coming out of committee was to award to the low bidder landwear construction of St. Cloud up to $163,550.30 and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This was, this was the low bid. We actually had five bids. I believe the highest bid was almost 200,000 more. So quite a wide range. This one came in under the engineer, engineer's estimate by about 3%.
Nice. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Thank you. Item number three was the downtown snow removal bids. This is our special services district. We actually reached out to five different companies this year. Ended up getting two bids. One bid was lower than the usual Tom's Backhoe service, but they have since withdrawn their bid. So motion was to award the bid to Tom's Backhoe and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just add that it's about 5% more or higher than it was last year. So it's something that continues to go up. So we've always wanted more bids. But that's where we're at and they do a great job. So we don't have to worry about the services.
Thank you. Tiffany?
I just wanted to add that while staff reached out directly to five, it was also posted and like other people could have put in bids too. They were just direct reach up to the five.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Thank you. Last item was the approval of the 2024 through 2033 capital improvement plan. This is from Director, or Public Works Director Jesse Dean. It's a 10-year capital improvements plan for our streets, projects. Motion coming out of committee was to approve this 10-year capital improvement plan as is and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Clarify, approve and adopt.
Approve and adopt. Is that a resolution? Do we need to roll call that? Probably not. Any discussion? No. I, I, I have discussion. I just want to thank Jesse for getting all of this information that was in our older plans together and included in this plan because I really like all of the introduction, the purpose of the plan, all, a look at the system and all the charts and graphs that are accompanied. They're all there. Looks great. So thanks a lot for getting that done. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries.
And report.
Thank you. Next up is unfinished business. Mary Badoo.
Thank you for that, Councilman Johnson. The following applications are available on our website, The following terms for the following commissions are available. Charter commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. The library, one term expiring 2025. Rental license board of appeals, potentially, not available, but currently, five terms available. TAC, one term available, expiring 2023. Also, the EDA, one term expiring 2026. And then there are a couple council president recommendations as well.
If anybody wants to get on the parking commission in the next half hour, I can make your dream come true. Otherwise, you'll have to talk to Kelly.
Does my residence have to be right in the core of Brainerd or can we?
No, not at all.
Okay.
But you do have to fill out the application. So you might not be obligated to done yet. Okay, next up, under unfinished business is 5B, the final reading on proposed ordinance 1556, creating section 1350 of the city code, micro mobility. Anything to add that's not in the packet, Jesse?
No, sir. I'd just like to highlight that this is the same version that was included at the first reading. We didn't receive any additional comments between then and now. So we're recommending the final reading as well as holding the public hearing to hear public testimony on it before a potential motion to adopt.
Excellent. So the order is to conduct the final reading, then hold the public hearing, then vote to adopt or not. Right now, I'm looking for a motion to conduct the final reading.
I move to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading.
Dispense with the actual reading. Has to be unanimous. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. So now we'll go on to the second item, which is hold the public hearing and I will open the public hearing at 7:53. Is anybody in attendance here to talk about section 1350 of the city code, micro mobility? Is anybody here to talk about micro mobility? Is anybody here to talk about micro mobility? It seems there is not. I will close the public hearing at 7:53. Now I'm looking for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 1556.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the adoption? It sounded like Kevin had some. Is there anything you'd like to share with the group, Kevin?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm hurt.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Kara, roll call.
Roll call. It's, it's, it's an ordinance. Sorry, yeah. Please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Terry.
Stengel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Chesak.
Yes. Okay, that is adopted. That ordinance is adopted. We'll move on to 8C, final reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance 1557, amendment to section 1015.07 of the city code pertaining to payment of fees. So the same order, we're going to start with a motion to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Move on to number two is hold the public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 7:54. Is anybody here to talk about amending section 1015.07 of the city code? Is anybody here to talk about amending section 1015.07 of the city code? Is anybody here to talk about amending section 1015.07 of the city code? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:55. Now we're looking for a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1557. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Jeff?
I am wondering if regarding short-term rental, and we have one of those on our agenda tonight. There's fees for those as well, correct? For short-term rental?
Correct, please.
Right. So what I'm asking is when we find somebody that did not properly follow procedure, can we also do something like this for those cases as well?
Set a question to James.
Whoever can answer.
James, can you answer that?
Yeah, so that's precisely what this ordinance is for. Currently, we can double fee building permits, but we haven't been able to do that for zoning permits, which the interim use permit would be a zoning permit for a short-term rental. So that's really the, the purpose of this ordinance.
This will take care of that?
It would take care of that. You have to charge a double fee for the interim use permit.
Okay.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion? Hearing none, oh, well, vote. Please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry. Stengel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Chesak.
Yes.
That is adopted. We have a new ordinance. Next item, 8D, is the final reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 1558, rental dwelling license board of appeals. Same process here. Right now, I'm looking for a motion to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Now we're up to two. Hold a public hearing on proposed ordinance 1558. I will open the public hearing at 7:57. Is anyone here to talk about the rental dwelling license board of appeals? Name and address.
Rebecca LaPlante, Executive Acres Road, Brainerd. So I'm here representing the Brainerd area, Brainerd Lakes area landlord board. Did I get that right?
We now are switching to rental property owners and managers.
Right. We're co-chairs. So we're fine with you guys dissolving this because obviously you're having problems, you know, finding people to sit on it. I was supposed to take Rick Fargo's place, but I'm not inside the core Brainerd, so I could not be on the board. But what we would like to ask is to have a representative, a landlord representative, when there are rental license issues. We feel like, we feel that you need to have a landlord's perspective on some of it. It doesn't mean we are there to fight for the person who's losing their license. In fact, we may be on the other side where we're going to say, hey, yes, please, this person's license needs to be revoked. But we do think that you need a representative that knows what's going on in the city or with the rentals. We thought that it could either be the current head of the landlord association or Dave Peringer has offered to do it too. So, I mean, if he's not around, if just somebody on our committee could be involved, that's all we ask.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is anybody else here to talk about proposed ordinance 1558? Is anybody here to talk about proposed ordinance 1558, the rental dwelling license board of appeals? Is anybody here to talk about proposed ordinance 1558? Seeing no one else come up, I will close the public hearing at 7:59 and looking for a motion to approve proposed ordinance 1558 or a motion to change it.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion?
I'll vote no because I think your request is a reasonable one. So I would prefer that be added in, but it sounds like it won't be, so.
I think, I'll be voting yes. I think the request is a reasonable one and I think it is something we should do, but I, I don't know how we could formal, I don't know how we'd formalize that in ordinance. That would be easy for staff over the long term. Like we, now we have two active, engaged members of that committee. But what if their leadership falls apart and we are obligated to get ahold of them in the future, but there's nobody to get ahold? So there are concerns like that. So I think I'll vote to move forward with this and trust that Safety and Public Works can work out a good plan with the, with the property owners group. Mike?
Yeah, I agree. I think we've had, you know, whatever, five years where.
I think we've had, you know, whatever, five years where we haven't had anything happen with that group. So coming up with this idea now, it, it does make sense. It's a reasonable request, and I think Safety and Public Works can somehow or another include some form of your opinion on whatever this happens to be when it comes up. But I think you're exactly right. We don't really know how long you guys will be together, how official it is. It's, it is what it is. We know that Safety and Public Works will be here, so we can always move forward with them, and we will always take opinions from the public. So I think it's, it's a reasonable request, but I think we can move forward as is for now.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Jeff?
When this, if this is adopted, and S and PW will be the actual, the, take the place of the, I believe it was a five-member committee, and the rental dwelling license board of appeals. We, we just make a recommendation at that point to the city council, I do believe, if we ever meet and have an item such as this, we discuss. And then, like Mike said, we, I think we're very open to hearing all voices at a appeal hearing. So to have somebody on the committee, I think, would be a little awkward at this point. Not that I don't think you have a reasonable request, but I, I think that's what, I didn't quite, I didn't quite understand if that's what the request was, to have a seat at the table or just be at the meeting. So maybe somebody could clarify that for me, if that was what the request was by our public hearing speaker.
So Jeff, my understanding of the request is they wanted to be notified so they could provide their input on any actions on rental licenses.
Okay.
Mr. President? And I have experience through my day job with the landlord group, and they've been a very engaging and very long-term group that have been active in trying to support all sorts of efforts within, within the county. So that's all I'm just saying.
I thought you were adding an answer to Jeff's question. The floor is still his unless you are, unless you're done, Jeff.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yep.
Okay. So I thought you called on me. I'm sorry. So anyway, they're, they have been a supportive, ongoing, long-term group that we've been interacting with through my role in my day job, and so I would support their, at least, sharing of information or input on any decisions that are made, if we're not going to include it in the, in the ordinance before us.
Thank you. Kevin?
I agree with everything said, but I think the simple fix is all our meetings are open to the public, and I would just make sure that they know when our meetings are going on, and they can come and sit and do whatever, and I'm sure if there's questions they have, I can't imagine we wouldn't allow them to speak.
I agree.
SBW has long meetings. We let everybody speak.
We're used to that.
We know. Mayor Bedeau?
As the only person that has actively on this council, sat in on one of the license board of appeals decisions, the previous makeup was one renter, or was it, it was one renter, I believe, two landlords, one person from the council. So that, we had had that in the past, and we're just having a struggle getting people at the seat. I don't foresee this being a huge issue all the time, however, at some point, it's going to come up again. Again, as I said, you know, I was told it would never happen. It has never happened in the history of the time, and it happened immediately, but I think this clarifies a few things, and I do think that staff should be reaching out to the landlord group anytime there's an issue with landlords as a whole, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Sting, Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Chesaw.
Yes. That motion carries. That brings us to item nine, new business. Nine A is a CUP for an animal clinic at 1606 Mill Avenue. James, anything to add that's not included in the packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So just wanted to outline a couple things here. So because they're operating and microchipping and vaccinating, it's similar to an animal clinic, so staff is requiring a conditional use permit application for this. Just a couple things of note, all animals are distributed to foster families the same day they arrive. Staff also did make a slight change from the planning commission meeting after speaking with animal control officer, Michael O'Brien, essentially requiring them to meet all state licenser, licensing requirements prior to operation of the animal clinic at that facility. So with that, planning commission does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Dogs cannot be kept or left unattended outside of the building. No more than 20 dogs can be on the premises at any one time. This number excludes puppies under the age of four months. No more than four dogs can be kept overnight at the premise. The building, that the building is properly soundproofed to negate noise pollution created by the proposed use. Property is free of animal feces at all times and properly disposed of to mitigate any noxious smells to the neighboring properties. Prior to operation, all state health department and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency requirements for the facility are met along with any state license and your requirements. So with that, can I answer any questions? The reason staff put all of those into the conditions is if they're not following any of these, it would potentially lead to a revocation, rather than just relying on city ordinance where we, where we could only fine. So that's the reason staff is recommending those conditions.
Thank you, James. Any questions of James before we act on this? Mayor?
So James, would this allow them to, if they wanted to in the future, actually have an active animal clinic?
It, it would potentially, yeah, allow something like that if they were to get, you know, proper state licensing for something like that.
Would that?
But if they're expanding their use, they would probably have to come back then for a, an amended conditional use permit.
Perfect. That was my question.
All right. Any other questions? Well, looking for a motion to recommend approval or denial of the conditional use permit with the six listed conditions.
Move to approve with the six listed conditions.
A motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is nine B, consider an interim use permit for a short-term rental at 502 Juniper Street. James, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just one quick item here. Since last planning commission meeting, the property has been inspected and approved by both building official and fire marshal. They corrected all items required of them, so staff is leaving that out of the final approval, which was option, or which was condition one. So with that, planning commission recommends approval of the interim use permit for one short-term rental at 502 Juniper Street with the following conditions. Submitter of the local option sales tax form to the finance department each month and before resuming operations as a short-term rental, and the interim use permit for a short-term rental at 502 Juniper Street, Brainard, Minnesota terminates on 12/31/2024. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of James? Hearing none, I'm ready for a motion to recommend approval or denial of the interim use permit.
To approve with the three listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the interim use permit with the three listed conditions. Is there any discussion? Tiffany?
James has done a great job of summarizing our discussions at the planning commission. I did want to highlight the 12/31/2024 because the planning commission is reviewing the interim use permits for short-term rentals. So it does have a date at which we can either renew or not.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Mike?
I'll vote no. I stand by my comments that if somebody does this without proper licensing, I think they should have a period of one year. So I will vote no.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Next up is nine D, first reading of proposed ordinance 1560. John? You presenting this? Yeah, go ahead.
Chief.
Sorry.
The process for approving and issuing license for tobacco, tobacco products, and tobacco-related products includes the police department querying the criminal history of an applicant using the criminal justice information system. For the police department to do so, the city of Brainard would need to identify this usage in ordinance. Section 1505.03 of the city code, which regulates background checks for applicants, doesn't identify tobacco as one of the licenses. The police department is authorized to perform the criminal history background investigation for. So as we were doing this previously, we were working under authority of Minnesota State statute. Sorry. Recently, our staff attended a workshop and spoke with the state criminal justice information auditor, and a result of the training and the discussion led to a little bit of uncertainty as far as if that statute alone permitted us to use that information system. And the auditor was either unable or unwilling to give us direction. So after consultation with attorney Langle, his recommendation was to include the tobacco licensing into that section, covering that usage.
Thank you. Any questions of the chief? Hearing none will look for a motion to conduct the first reading and dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Brings us to nine E, consider request to Crow Wing County to not tax Brainard residents for the airport contribution. Presenter is Jeff. What do you got?
Yes. For years, I think, as long as the county and city have been contributed to the airport for the local share, Crow Wing County has included Brainard property taxpayers in their levy of $157,000 currently. And then again, we, as a city council levy, the Brainard property taxpayers, $155,500. I'm asking that we, as a city council, ask the Crow Wing County Board to amend their levy to take out Brainard property taxpayers from their portion they give to the airport. And it's kind of interesting because at our last meeting, there was some discussion about the housing trust fund that's for the HRA, and the county levies everyone in the county for that money, with the exception of Pequot Lakes, Crosby, and Brainard taxpayers because they have their own HRAs. This, there is a similarity here, and my understanding is that there are county board members that do not, are not too pleased with the fact that a lot of the property developed or interest in property management in these other cities that don't get levied for housing trust fund money, that money then is turned around back to those specific communities. So in many respects, we're just asking that Brainard taxpayers be removed from the airport levy the county issues. And I would move that we proceed with that, making that request.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think you summarized it well. Jeff, I absolutely agree with you. I think, you know, just in the matter of fairness, they're very concerned about fairness over at the county nowadays, that we wouldn't be tat, double taxing the citizens of Brainard. So I think it's a very reasonable request. Any other discussion?
I did have one other thing, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Jeff.
We do have three representatives on the county board that have constituents in the city of Brainard, and I'm confident that they want to look out for the best interest of their constituents that pay taxes in the city of Brainard and also in Crow Wing County, so.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, will vote. All in favor of requesting not to be double taxed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. I'm, I apologize to everybody. I skipped one. We got the proposed ordinance for off-street parking and outdoor storage, so we're going to bump back up. My, I'm, I'm a rookie here. I don't know what I'm doing. So the, so ordinance number 1559. James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm just going to quickly go through kind of the main objectives of this ordinance the planning commission has been working on. So some of the main objectives are removing parking minimums for all non-residential uses except for one space per commercial unit in the Main Street and Town Center districts. This is recommended by Parking Commission. Create parking maximums in all non-residential zoning districts. Determine a new standard for the minimum residential parking required, creating a tiered approach for multifamily buildings, including the accessory dwelling unit in the parking minimum formula. Incentivizing bicycle spaces for multifamily businesses or buildings. Require fully enclosed unattended trailers to be closed and secured at all times, and regulate parking on unapproved surfaces in their rear yard by requiring screening. Planning Commission did ask staff to create a diagram for that, which staff did include in the ordinance as well for a better understanding of that. With that, I can answer any questions, but staff is recommending, based on Planning Commission's recommendation, a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance number 1559, an ordinance amending section 515-4-12 and 515-3-28 of the zoning code, and a note, and to dispense with the actual reading, vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of James?
I say for, oh, first reading. Clarify.
Yeah. So I guess we're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading and dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mayor Bedeau?
My question would be about, with the residential stuff, does that include the short-term?
I asked you if you had any questions before the motion.
Okay, okay.
You can ask.
No, I will, I will wait.
Okay, seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye. Oh, Mike, you do have something?
Do you, do you have a question before the motion?
Well, you know, I don't, now that you say that, I'm not so sure it's a question.
I don't want to, I want discussion on the motion.
So the 30 feet from the rear of the property line is, is the one that catches my eye because it works in the areas where we have square blocks and square properties, but in a neighborhood like my own, the back of the property is pretty far away from the house. It's through the woods, you know? And if I have to be parking a trailer, a trailer that I have 30 feet from the back of the property, it's arguable where that even is. So I don't know, it's probably fine the way it is, but I could see that specific part being a problem in certain neighborhoods.
Hmm. Well, yeah, let's, let's have you and James figure this out for the second reading and Well, yeah, let's, let's have you and James figure this out for the second reading and see if we can get something that works better.
Proper screening.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Any other discussion? Or questions, Mayor Bado?
Well, the discussion is, simply put, that I, in looking at the house rules for the previous short-term rental, it states in there that the county application does not allow for on-street parking. So I just want to make sure that if we're going to have an ordinance that is for short-term rentals in the city of Brainerd, that is then also in a residential area, that those two gel together if that's the case. I don't know if it is the case, it just says in, this is the first I've seen this. But within the parking, it says the county license allows up to one vehicle per bedroom. There can be no parking on a public road or in a yard. I have not checked on this, however, I'm just reading that for the first time. So I just want to make sure that if that's the case and we're saying that there are no parking minimums within residential, well, that would be contrary to what is the county license. Allegedly.
Allegedly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor of the first reading and to dispense with the actual reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Okay, we're back on track, everybody. We're back on track for up to 10. Public forum. I will open the public forum at 8:17. Is there anybody who wishes to address the city council tonight? Anybody wishes to address the city council? Does anybody wish to address the city council? Seeing nobody come forward, we will close the public hearing and move on to staff reports. We'll start with Chris. Tim?
Yeah, thank you. The only thing I have is just a reminder of our open house, October 12th next week, from 5:00 to 7:00. So I'd like to see everyone there to enjoy everything we got. The fire department will be there along with the police department. The airport will be out there. So just a great way to see all the public safety entities all in one place. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing here, thank you.
James?
Nothing to add?
Jesse?
Nothing to add, Mr. Vice President.
Tony? Chief? Nope, Sean, sorry. This is my first time. It's my first time. Sean, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing.
Chief?
Yes, two items. Since the last time council had met, there had been some positive movement in the school resource officer issue. Attorney General gave a second opinion, which is binding in school matters. And after speaking with attorney Langle today, we believe that opinion has addressed a lot of our primary concerns. And my intent is to start discussions with the school district about reestablishing the contract. And I would anticipate bringing that back before you at the October 16th meeting. Second item is, last night, we had a burglary in a residential home here in Brainerd. Some of you may have seen a press release I had put out just a couple of hours ago. It was requesting the public's help in identifying an individual. And it was also a cautionary message to some of the residents in there. And I just would like to report that approximately an hour ago, we took our suspect into custody. So want to thank the public's help and then also alleviate maybe any additional concerns some of the residents might have had when they go to bed this evening. So that's all, thank you.
Was the suspect Tony? People on Facebook were pretty adamant that it was Tony.
I can tell you the individual's first name was not Tony.
Okay, thank you.
I can speak to that right now.
Tony's still out there.
Tony's still on the lam. Thank you, chief. That's a, that's a.
Good update and thanks for the quick work from your department.
And Jennifer?
Nothing to add, thank you.
All right, that brings us.
Eric.
Oh, Eric, Eric, do you have anything to add? Thank you.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. This is, this is off the rails, 8:20. Okay, now mayor's report.
Oh, and you will let me speak. Thank you. All right, so a couple of updates, super fast. We had a very wet, soggy flapjack festival slash touch a truck that happened last weekend. Was that last weekend? I'm forgetting already. It took a long, white ways to dry out, but great event, went very well, highly attended, even though it was a consistent rain. But just want to thank everyone that came out for that. Thank ECFE and the school district for their participation as well. Turned out great. Thank the city engineer as well as the streets department for showing up with the big trucks, making kids happy. So thank you to everyone involved in that. A couple of things to note coming up here in the city of Brainerd. October 10th, which is next week, there is a domestic violence vigil that will be happening at Kiwanis Park. That is at 6:30 PM. Please attend if you would like to be involved in that. And the next celebration in our downtown is the Downtown Brainerd Spooktacular Event. I don't know if you've ever been involved, but I believe this is year 20 or coming up on year 20. So this has been happening for quite a while. That is October 28th. It is a Saturday. It is from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And it's pretty exciting to see all the kids that come down for that event, truck around the downtown. And they're, you know, the, the amount of Spider-Mans that you will see in one area is probably the highest concentration in the entire nation. But as a, as a parent of a son who will not be Spider-Man for the first time in his life, I will say that maybe that trend is falling. So we'll see what happens. But I know that I have diminished the Spider-Mans by one, so, end of report.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings us to council member reports. Start with Jeff.
Yeah, maybe we see a spider mayor. I have two things. First one is a little housekeeping. I think we maybe left a little bit off on our request to Crow Wing County. I, it's not identified who should send that. Is that something we could just easily ask maybe Administrator Bergman would be appropriate maybe if?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then I did want to mention that Public Utilities is considering shutting off the unfluoridated tap. Which means it's currently not work, not operating down at the waterworks by Kiwanis Park down there or Buster Park. And I personally know there's a lot of people that use that faucet and fill their water jugs with unfluoridated water, which I believe was in 1980. The city council agreed to let citizens fill their water jugs with unfluoridated water. My understanding is this will be on their agenda the last Tuesday of October. And I just, whatever notice that can be given, I, the only thing that will be out there, I think, in the newspaper will be their agenda as published on the weekend paper prior to that Tuesday. So kind of an interesting thing. A lot of people use it. And I think there may be a little bit of a concern that if that's gone, they won't be able to access unfluoridated water any longer. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Jeff. And you reminded me, I have actually had a couple constituents contact me about that. I think if, if you felt so inclined to make a motion to have the Brainerd city council request that the Public Utility Commission keep the unfluoridated tap running or start it back up again, I, I think that would be in order right now.
I, you know, I don't know if we have that authority.
We can, we have the authority to ask people to do things, yeah.
Yeah, they're concerned about the health hazard with not having chlorinated or unfluoridated. So I would make a motion that we ask the Public Utilities could give a serious consideration to leaving that water available to the public unfluoridated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yeah, I support the motion. Jeff, I'm glad you brought it up. I think it's, I, I think, you know, in addition to all the people that use it and want unfluoridated water, you know, minnow, fluoride kills minnows. That's good minnow water if you have minnows left over after you're fishing. But I think it's a piece of Brainerd history. Right? I mean, we went all the way to the Minnesota Supreme Court trying to fight against fluoridation. We got it handed to us, but it happened and it's part of history. And we still were defiant to create one tap to give the public access to that sweet unfluoridated water. And I, I, I think we should, I think we should leave it there just as a history buff. Any other discussion?
Not knowing enough about the public safety reasons behind why they would close that, I will vote no for the measure until I know more. No offense to your historian.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Jeff.
There, there is going to be chlorinated water in the city of Brainerd. There currently is chlorinated water on Riverside Drive and the airport extension water. And that's been that way for years. And what's going to happen eventually is the city of Brainerd will get chlorinated water. They do not have the opportunity or the option to chlorinate that tap. That's one of the hiccups, I guess, if you will, why they're debating this, because of the potential health risks. Discussion was brought up about just putting a sign there saying not, no, this water, not, not potable water. And that way it would notify people using it. It's not exactly safe. However, it hasn't been potable water since day one. So there is that. So just a little background on that.
Thanks, Jeff.
No.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, back to council member reports. Is that all you had, Jeff?
Yep.
All right, Tiffany.
I was able to tour the St. Cloud wastewater treatment plant with Region 5. Met Charlie Gammonler from BPU. And it was incredibly fascinating the way that they are able to take municipal wastewater, which, yeah, poop. And really transfer it into the energy to power their wastewater treatment plant. And every step of the process, they are making use of what they've got to make something, which is poop, to make something useful. So that was, that was really interesting and I would encourage anybody who gets the opportunity to tour their wastewater treatment plant to do so.
Say poop one more time.
Poop.
Thank you.
He's a record show.
Call them, no date.
Yeah, on, on that note. We, we were, we were able to, a lot of us were able to tour our facilities with Todd Wicklin, our Public Utilities Director. And I just want to say thank you to him for that. We, we got to walk through the dam and see all the old machines and machinery that are inside the dam and how it works. And it, we got to see some of the other facilities too, but like I said, on that note, the very last thing we saw was an eternal flame. And that eternal flame is, is burning the gas of two cities. Human-made gas. And I didn't know we had that. And, and I, I suggested maybe we form a cauldron of some sort and put, and pipe that over to downtown as a decoration.
In St. Cloud, they use that.
I'm not going to make a motion.
They use it.
But this is a four-foot flame we're talking about. It's impressive. Jeff takes credit for half of it.
Thank you, Mike.
Where are we going? President, control this, will you please?
Kevin, the floor is yours.
I can't top any of that, forget it.
Kara?
I too appreciated the tour of the different BPU facilities. Todd also let my neighbor Curly come along and he really enjoyed the tour. Todd did say if any residents are interested in touring our facilities, just to get ahold of them and they would set that up. So I would encourage everyone to attend and see the eternal flame. One more little note that we have a community event, or Bridges of Hope has a community event coming up this Sunday, October 8th at 8:00 at the Gitchi Zibby Center. The Prairie Homeless Companion will be giving a theatrical performance. And then Bridges of Hope will have a reception after the presentation. Our own Officer Rundy will be presenting at that event. And it's, it's going to be very insightful and tickets are very reasonable. People can go to the Bridges of Hope website to purchase them.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just say I was at the Pancake Fest and it was, it was a grand old time. I look forward to attending it again next year. I too went on the BPU tours with Todd and I had never been inside the dam structure before. And going inside there is just, it is awesome in there. And if you haven't been to our hydropower dam, go take the opportunity of getting a tour. It's really cool. The coolest thing is that it is built on petrified oak timber. So it's actually floating in the river and could just up and take off someday. Living on the wild side there, a little bit of risk. Okay, Kevin. It's your turn.
It's a flaming good idea to adjourn.
Second.
To approve, or move, a motion to adjourn.
So we have the motion to the closed session, negotiation strategy pursuant to Minnesota Statuary 13D.03 subdivision 1B.
Yeah, adjourn to a closed session.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. It'll take five minutes to clear the room.